I'd like to call it a order this November 23rd, 2020, meeting of the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors. Tonight, we're continuing with their hybrid form of meetings where we have people in attendance who are practicing social distancing, and we're also having people join us remotely. Mr. Smith, would you please instruct folks as to how they can join this meeting remotely?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Welcome everybody tonight. If you'd like to join our meeting remotely via Zoom, simply hit, raise your hand and I'll recognize you from the front, and also you can hit star nine on your phone to call in any times. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
For the folks who are not in the audience tonight here at the Village Building, I will briefly go through who is in attendance at this meeting. To my left is Mr. Mike Byerly, our District Three Supervisor. To my immediate left is my county, our county administrator, Mr. Ned Smither. To the far right, I have the county attorney, Mr. Thomas Lashning. To his left, immediate left, is Mrs. Carmack. She is our District Five Supervisor. To my immediate right is our District Four Supervisor, Mr. Cox. And joining us from home tonight is District Two Supervisor, Mr. Larry Norvik.
Evening, everybody.
So tonight, I would like to ask Mr. Cox if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegions, and Mrs. Carmack, would you please do the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, thank you for another beautiful day in Powhatan. Please guide us tonight as we seek to do the people's business. Amen.
Do I have any requests to postpone agenda items and additions, deletions, or changes to the order of presentation tonight? And I will ask for a motion for a formal approval of the agenda.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye.
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 County Administrator, updates. Mr. Smither.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I've got an addition to our, to my list here, wanted to add on to start with. I'd like to update the public in general. We have a, tonight, we'd like to let you know that as of this morning, we decided to pull back on the number of staff members that we're keeping in the office on a daily basis due to COVID-related topics. We successfully operated this past spring and early summer with a similar strategy. We found it to be a much safer strategy, and we were able to maintain good customer service during that time with staff working both remotely and from the office. This technology, the technology investment made by the Board of Supervisors to increase electronic productivity has proved to be invaluable, as we're able to work from home as efficiently as we are in the office. For the public, whenever possible, please call the agency that you're looking to contact, and we'll, most likely, we'll provide you answers over the phone, but if you decide to come into the office, we'll still be there for you to answer your questions. Just thought it'd be helpful to let everybody know that we're trying to pull back a little bit on the staffing that you'll see in our main offices throughout the county for a short timeframe. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, on that.
Mr. Smither, I think we've got an opportunity to share with the public tonight recognition of our first responders, citizens, and something that happened special in the county.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tonight, I'd like to provide you with an example of Powhatan at its best. When our public safety teams and amazing citizens of Powhatan combine forces, some fantastic things can happen. I would like to ask Fire Chief Phil Warner to come forward and give you a nice, pretty Thanksgiving update on some recent occurrences. Chief Warner.
Thank you, Board members, for the opportunity. We wanted to bring something good, some really positive news that had come out in the last, actually, this event that happened in August. And I'm not going to be the one speaking of it, because I have somebody who can speak much more clear and much more eloquent than I am, and it's Taylor Goodman from Company Two. But we're just going to run through the series of events of what happened in August, and I think you'll be really satisfied with what is so important in the chain of survival for cardiac arrest survivors, is our citizens, right down to first responders transporting to the hospital. Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you, chief. Welcome.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the board for having us tonight. On the afternoon of August 9th, 2020, new Powhatan resident Stan Edwards was enjoying a bicycle ride when he experienced a sudden cardiac arrest at the intersection of Genitoe Road and Rocky Ford Road. Mr. Edwards is an experienced triathlete and has run several marathons in his life. It was at this point that his heart stopped working. Local citizens Ashley Hancock, Andy Edwards, Chris Myers, and Robert LaRue immediately rendered bystander CPR and notified the Powhatan 911 Center.
If, as he announces your names, you can come down, it'd be awesome. Thank you.
And to the members of our public safety team, you're also welcome to come down as your name is called. The emergency communication center, the 911 Center, where dispatchers Tony Nappke, Don Granger, and Mary Franklin were on duty, immediately dispatched Medic 721, EMS 702, and Battalion Chief 709, which brought firefighters Bob Haggerty, Charlie Holland, Nate Jones, and Bill Denotti Jr. to the scene. Also responding to assist were District Chief Ryan Burke, firefighter Taylor Goodman, and Medic 711, staffed by Jamie Babcock and Sonny Lee. Powhatan Sheriff Sergeant Michael Boggs and Deputy Julia Levin Dusky responded as well. Nationwide, less than 12% of sudden cardiac arrest victims survive this event, but this number can be tripled by the delivery of bystander CPR. Mr. Edward's survival was in thanks to fast bystander CPR and immediately calling the 911 Center to start the EMS response. It truly takes a village for the chain of survival to begin, and we're proud to recognize those who were an integral part of this lifesaving event. If you would, please recognize these personnel.
And we happen to have the young man who experienced that event. If he wants to come down, and if he wants to speak, it's up to him, but we got the opportunity to meet with him and talk with him yesterday, him and his family, and I know he's been so grateful for everything that's gone on well in his life.
Absolutely.
This is Stan Edwards.
Thank you guys so much for allowing me to be here tonight. This is hard, so bear with me. My wife and my son are back here. I've got three other children, and they're not here tonight, and I apologize for this. You guys have touched my life and my family in phenomenal ways, and I hope after we meet here, we can talk out here a little bit more, but from the bottom of my heart, thank you guys so much. I really greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to give everybody just a minute for the folks that wish to leave, to go into the hall.
Mr. Chairman, that's what makes it special, doesn't it?
Yes, it does. Okay, this moves us to the floor where we will have our first public comment period. Please come down. If you wish to speak to the board, please give your name or address. We will allow you three minutes. If you're representing a group, we will allow you five minutes. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Joe Ordia. I live at 3343 South Meadow Circle, and I'm also here tonight on behalf of Virginia Freedom Keepers. Virginia Freedom Keepers is a group of over 10,000 Virginians, and we advocate for the medical freedom rights of all Virginians and all Americans, really, but of course, with the Virginia chapter, we're mainly focused here in the Commonwealth. And I'm here tonight to talk to you about some things that I think are of great importance and potentially great concern for many freedom-loving residents here in Powhatan, and that is the Northam Administration's announced intention to issue a mandatory COVID-19 vaccine to all Virginians as it becomes available. I believe it was actually the Health Commissioner, Norm Oliver, that said that he intends to mandate this vaccine for all Virginians when it becomes available. And I've got some, some large concerns with this plan. Number one, just on the surface, I think it violates the religious freedoms of many Virginians. There are a lot of people that feel very strongly about this issue. We have a long precedent as Americans in respecting our citizens' religious liberties, and especially as it pertains to accepting or not accepting a particular medical treatment. I think with this one in particular, it's particularly worrisome because of how rapidly this, these vaccines have been developed in this so-called warp speed. And so I think there's many people that are not going to want to have anything to do with that, and I think that we ought to respect those individual rights. And so what we're looking to do here, and I'm going to be following up with a draft resolution, I'll share with my district supervisor and maybe the secretary here, but what we're looking to do here is to establish a First Amendment and Fourth Amendment sanctuary, very similar to what we've done with the Second Amendment. We know that the good people here in Powhatan and the law enforcement here generally respect the natural rights as described and protected in the Constitution, and they wouldn't want to see those rights violated by an unconstitutional mandate coming out of Richmond. Now, I could go on and on with this, but I wanted to just share this with you. This is the Virginia Department of Health's draft COVID vaccination plan. It's a 59-page document. I'm going to share with you some of the highlights here. Vaccine orders will be approved and transmitted in CDC's Vaccine Tracking System, VTRX. They even have an acronym for it already. COVID-19 vaccination record cards for each vaccine recipient, so if you can imagine a little ID card to prove if you've been a good, good vaccine patient or not. These records must be made available to any federal, state, local, or territorial public health department to the extent authorized. Can you imagine walking into Walmart or walking into the bus station and have to present your medical papers? You know, papers, please. Provide a COVID-19 vaccination record card to every vaccine recipient. This one's particularly, particularly offensive to me personally. So, where is this here? Second dose reminders. COVID vaccination record cards will be provided as part of that vaccine ancillary kits. Vaccine providers should encourage vaccine recipients to keep the card in case the IIS system, the electronic system, goes down. So what I'm seeing with all this really comes down to medical tyranny. The administration in Richmond has proven that they don't care about our natural rights. They try to come after our Second Amendment, they try to come after our First Amendment. In fact, Mr. Byerly even had an experience trying to just get a public interest survey on this topic onto social media, and the thing was censored off of there. Apparently, the combination of the words "government," "vaccine," and "mandate" isn't allowed on Facebook anymore. So we have to hold the line here on medical freedom. I'm hoping we can hold it here locally in Powhatan, because mark my words, my friends, if we allow them to get this in, our kids are going to be dealing with mandatory abortions, mandatory sterilizations, and mandatory psychotropic drugs, right? People like me might be force-medicated because I'm too loud-mouthed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Geraldine Gallagher. I live at 2200 Founders View Lane, Midlothian, Virginia, in Powhatan County, and I attended your meeting on October 26th and mentioned that the residents of Founders Bridge were upset about the speeding and the traffic on Founders Bridge Boulevard. And several of our neighbors, we got together and formed a petition and went to 207 homes in Founders Bridge in Powhatan County. Of the 207 homes, 150, which is 72%, agreed that there is a problem on Founders Bridge Boulevard. So I have a petition here. I have the copy of the petition signed by the 150 residences that feel there needs to be something done before someone is killed or maimed. We have people walking on the walking trail. The crosswalks going over to the walking trail are not clearly marked. We have bicycles, adult and children bicycles using the walking trail, and we find that we have people coming through, looking at their cell phones, not paying attention, that could very easily lose control of their car and hit someone on that walking trail. One thing I want to say is that we do appreciate what you have done, having patrol cars out there, and tickets have been given out, and we thank you so much for that. And they, there was a patrol car right outside of my house, in the back of my house, and I have to tell you, those cars were going the speed limit. But the minute the speed car, the patrol car left, the traffic picked up and the speeding picked up. Once those apartments on the corner of Winterfield and Morovious are occupied, that's going to be, that's going to be roughly 400 vehicles possibility for them to cut through to Midlothian Turnpike on Founders Bridge Boulevard. What we're asking is for you to review this and perhaps talk with VDOT. VDOT will not talk to us. It has to come from you, and to see if there is something that can be done as far as making the crosswalks more safe, perhaps having, anything to slow the traffic down. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ma'am, ma'am.
I'm Jean Jordan, and I'm at 2228 Founders View Lane, Midlothian, and I'm also a Powhatan resident.
Welcome.
Thank you. And just to follow up what Mrs. Gallagher just said, we do need especially crosswalk marking. There are five places along Founders Boulevard where residents have to cross over to get to the cross, to the walkways, and they are not marked. To further say what Jerry was talking about, not only are people walking on the walkways, they also walk in the streets. There was a family just yesterday, a mother, a father, and two children riding bicycles along Founders Bridge Boulevard. We see joggers along Founders Bridge Boulevard in the road itself. These are all concerns of ours that sooner or later someone is going to be hurt. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Northworthy. I live at 2244 Founders View Lane. Used to live many other places in Powhatan as well, and glad to be still in Powhatan. And this is an issue because it's a safety issue. Just pulling out of Founders View Lane onto the Boulevard, I nearly got hit by a car coming around the blind court curve, and if it had been going 35, it wouldn't have hit me, but it wasn't. It was going about 50. And of course, the blaring of the horn let me know it was coming. I was in my car, and I couldn't even get out of the way, just barely got out of the way in time. So it's not just the walkers, it's also the traffic, the traffic that is attacking the traffic coming out of Founders View Lane. Though, if, we don't know exactly what the answer is. We've made some suggestions. Individuals who signed the petitions, if there was something they didn't like in the suggestions, they noted that, because we wanted everybody to have the opportunity to give their personal opinions. But this is something that needs to be addressed, and I'm hopeful that you all can see fit to go ahead and present this to VDOT, and maybe we can, I mean, well, yeah, and this will work out so that we can solve this. Thank you very much for hearing us.
Thank you. Mr. Smither, do we have anybody wishing to join us remotely tonight?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, we do not.
Seeing anyone else come forward, I will close the first public comment period. That will bring us to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, before a motion was made, we have one adjustment on June 29th, a typo, our header did not include reference to version A, B, and C, and staff would like to make that change on the header to refer to all three versions, if the board would agree to that.
Board comments? Any concerns? Then I'll have a motion for the consent agenda.
Still moved?
Second.
Mr. Norvik, thank you. Any discussion on the motion?
I have something.
I'm sorry, Mr. Norvik, please.
Yes, just real quick, so happy to see action on high-speed internet broadband service for areas that have been waiting a long time. I know in my district, some of these areas that are to be served, people have been walking door-to-door with petitions, they've had town hall-style meetings, I've gone door-to-door, et cetera, et cetera, and it's just, for me, it's been almost six years trying to get some service in some of the holes, if you will, in District Two, and just absolutely thrilled that we have an opportunity to start plugging some of those holes. So thank you, Ned, and thank you for everybody who helped put this together.
I'll piggyback on your statements, Mr. Norvik. Yes, it has been a long time coming, and we are making progress, and you'll be pleased to know I was on Old Peasberg Road on Saturday. Horizon was down there by Butterwood Creek, and they were putting in fiber. So I was stunned, but I was happy as well, so we'll take it, won't we?
Absolutely.
Mr. Smither, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Norvik?
A thousand times yes.
Mr. Byerly?
Yes.
Ms. Carmack?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye. This will move us to our first public hearing tonight. Mr. Smither?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pompey going to lead us in this?
Sir, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Pompey, please lead us into the first public hearing, please.
Welcome, Mr. Pompey.
Thank you, sir. So the first two public hearings are related to the same application. Powhatan Solar Two LLC has submitted a conditional use permit to allow a solar energy farm within the agricultural 10A10 zoning district. The proposed facility will be located on tax map parcels 27-14, 27-14A, and 26-104. Those properties are located on the south side of State Route 15, which is Three Bridge Road, east of US Route 522, and west of State Route 1330, which is Millmount Parkway. Those properties are located in the center of the county. So the first request is to review whether or not this particular project is in a substantial accord with recommendations made in the 2019 Long Range Conferences of Plan. One thing that is unique about solar farms is Section 15.2-2232 of the Code of Virginia requires that the Planning Commission make a determination as to whether solar energy farms are in substantial accord with the Conferences of Plan. On October 6th, the Planning Commission reviewed the CUP request. They recommended denial of the CUP request with a vote of three to two, stating that the proposal was not in accord or substantial accord with the Conferences of Plan. Section 15.2-2232 allows the applicant to appeal the decision made by the Planning Commission regarding conformance with the Conferences of Plan. So the applicant, on October 16th, submitted a petition for you all to determine whether or not this project is in accord with the recommendations made in the Conferences of Plan. So first item tonight, you'll be discussing whether or not the project's in accord with the Conferences of Plan, depending upon the decision you make on this first item. You will then discuss the conditional use permit, the proposed conditions, and the suitability of the requested use for its specific location. The applicant and their representative are here tonight, and I believe they have a presentation first to discuss why they think their project's in accord with recommendations of the Conferences of Plan, and then if we move forward, they'll provide more detail about the specific application. So they'll come up now for your presentation.
Let me get this unstuck here. Good evening.
I'll piggyback on your statements, Mr. Norvik. Yes, it has been a long time coming, and we are making progress. And you'll be pleased to know I was on Old Peasberg Road on Saturday. Horizon was down there by Butterwood Creek, and they were putting in fiber. So I was stunned, but I was happy as well. So we'll take it, won't we? Mr. Smith, would you call the roll?
Mr. Norvik?
A thousand times yes.
Mr. Barley?
Yes.
Ms. Carmack?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
This will move us to our first public hearing tonight. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pompey going to lead us in this?
Sir, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Pompey, please lead us into the first public hearing, please.
Welcome, Mr. Pompey.
Thank you, sir. So the first two public hearings are related to the same application. Powhatan Solar 2 LLC has submitted a conditional use permit to allow a solar energy farm within the agricultural 10A10 zoning district. The proposed facility will be located on tax map parcels 27-14, 27-14A, and 26-104. Those properties are located on the south side of State Route 15, which is Three Bridge Road, east of US Route 522, and west of State Route 1330, which is Millmount Parkway. Those properties are located in the center of the county. So the first request is to review whether or not this particular project is in a substantial accord with recommendations made in the 2019 Long Range Comprehensive Plan. One thing that is unique about solar farms is Section 15.2-2232 of the Code of Virginia requires that the Planning Commission make a determination as to whether solar energy farms are in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan. On October 6th, the Planning Commission reviewed the CUP request. They recommended denial of the CUP request with a vote of 3 to 2, stating that the proposal was not in accord or substantial accord with the comprehensive plan. Section 15.2-2232 allows the applicant to appeal the decision made by the Planning Commission regarding conformance with the comprehensive plan. So the applicant, on October 16th, submitted a petition for you all to determine whether or not this project is in accord with the recommendations made in the comprehensive plan. So first item tonight, you'll be discussing whether or not the project's in accord with the comprehensive plan. Depending upon the decision you make on this first item, you will then discuss the conditional use permit, the proposed conditions, and the suitability of the requested use for its specific location. The applicant and their representative are here tonight, and I believe they have a presentation first to discuss why they think their project's in accord with recommendations of the comprehensive plan. And then if we move forward, they'll provide more detail about the specific application. They'll come up now for your presentation.
Let me get this unstuck here. Good evening, members of the board. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. My name is Haley Larrabee. I work with Cypress Creek Renewables, and I am here representing the Powhatan Solar 2 LLC project. With me this evening, I have Lori Schweller, counsel from Williams-Mullen, and I also have David Lozowski from Balzer and Associates. He is our landscape architect. Let me make sure that's great. I know that we are here for this first agenda item to discuss the substantial accord with the comprehensive plan. Before we dig into that, I thought it might just be helpful for me to remind everyone who Cypress Creek is, and then just touch on briefly why we are here today with Powhatan Solar 2. Cypress Creek Renewables is powering a sustainable future, one project at a time. That is our motto. We have developed over 230 megawatts of solar projects across the Commonwealth of Virginia, all of which are under construction and expect to be online in 2020 or 2021. We've been active in Powhatan County since 2018. We are proud members of the Chamber of Commerce and also proud supporters of the Powhatan Free Clinic. I did just want to show briefly, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, is the location of the project. As Andrew noted, it is south of Three Bridge Road. I think there are likely a couple of question on everyone's mind here. I think everyone likely remembers that Cypress Creek brought forth the Powhatan Solar 1 project last year. That project was approved in October. And so I imagine there's really twofold question here. I imagine that the first question is likely, why are we here with the second project? Why are we here now with that? And then I imagine the other side of that is, why were these not considered as one combined project? Is there something we're trying to get around? Are we trying to get around M&amp;T tax? And so I hope to add some clarity to both of those questions here before we get started. In terms of the first question, why are these, you know, why are we here now? When we brought forth the Powhatan Solar 1 project, the Powhatan Solar 2 project did not yet seem viable from an interconnection perspective, based on the feedback we had gotten from Dominion, and because we had not yet received our interconnection studies for the project. We didn't receive those studies for Powhatan Solar 2 until like February or March of this year. At that point, we received feedback, which made us believe that the project would be viable from an interconnection perspective, which then led us to start working on our application and submitting our conditional use permit request to staff in June. I think it was June 5th. I think I was touching on the other question, you know, why were these considered? Why are they two separate projects? Why didn't we bring these together as one? And again, this is entirely related to interconnection. I don't want to get too specific, but we have the Powhatan Substation about 0.8 miles northeast. It's over on Maidens Road. We knew that this substation had two separate transformers. We knew that if we were to combine these projects to a combined total of 33 megawatts, that this, that size project would trigger the need to upgrade one of the transformers at the Powhatan Substation, because it could only be allocated to one transformer. This essentially would require that we pay to upgrade that transformer. That looks like roughly $3 to $5 million, dependent upon, you know, the transformer size that Dominion thinks is necessary to accommodate the project. So what we did, we knew that wouldn't allow for a viable project, so we decided we would split the two. And so we split them such that we had an 18-megawatt Powhatan Solar 1 with an application submitted to be on Transformer A. And then we submitted another request for Powhatan Solar 2, which would be allocated to Transformer B, based upon our request. Dominion continued to study those. We got feedback from Powhatan Solar 1 first, and then we received feedback, like I mentioned, in February or March this year on Powhatan Solar 2. So I do just want to note, we aren't really, we aren't trying to get around any requirements, but truly for these projects to be viable, they had to be submitted as separate interconnection requests. Before I pass it over to Lori Schweller, who will talk a little bit about the comprehensive plan, I just wanted to note a couple of highlights. The project is 15 megawatts AC with a proposed maximum array area, which is essentially the fenced area of the project, of no more than 160 acres. A project of this size can service about 2,000 single-family homes. And a project of this size does have fairly significant contributions to the county in terms of real estate tax revenue. I just wanted to note that here we have about $26,000 in estimated tax revenue in year one. That is for real estate taxes plus the rollback taxes. We also expect, over the life of the facility, for $892,500 to be contributed to Powhatan County in real estate taxes. I did want to note that both of these numbers have been reviewed and confirmed by the Commissioner of Revenue as these figures were provided in a financial impacts overview with our application. Just two more things to note here. We did suggest, or we did commit to a $20,000 proffer to Powhatan County Fire and Rescue, as well as another $20,000 proffer to Parks, to Powhatan County for Parks and Recreation Capital Improvement Projects. And the last benefit that I wanted to note here is, as a result of feedback from the Planning Commission, we have committed to making Powhatan Solar 2 a certified pollinator smart program via the DEQ and DCR program that they've established. At this time, I would like to go ahead and skip ahead. We just had the one's presentation, but I will pass it over to Lori Schweller, who will discuss the consistency with the comprehensive plan. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. My name is Lori Schweller, attorney with Williams-Mullen, representing Powhatan 2 LLC. I would like to address the project's consistency with your comprehensive plan and ask that you reconsider the Planning Commission's decision, in fact overturn that decision, to find that the project is in substantial compliance with the comprehensive plan. As you know, the comprehensive plan informs the zoning ordinance and guides you in your legislative deliberations regarding the special use permit. It also provides guidance to developers, such as the one before you tonight, to submit to you a project that would be consistent with what the county is looking for and expects and desires from its solar facilities. The proposed project fulfills all six of these desired features under consideration in your comprehensive plan. I'd like to go through those with you just briefly before focusing on the one that was of concern to the Planning Commission. The first is project size. Your comprehensive plan asks that a proposed solar energy farm have a project size of under 500 acres. This particular project has a size of 160 acres, and we'll talk about that a little bit more after, after the six factors. The second point is that the project has access to a major thoroughfare. This project has access off State Route 615. Third, to protect the view sheds from neighboring properties and, and roadways, the project needs to have sufficient buffers. And of course, we are complying with your zoning ordinance there, including 200-foot buffers along the roadway, which includes 175 feet of preserved vegetation, excuse me, 125 feet of preserved vegetation. Fourth, protecting natural resources. The project will have a 200-foot buffer from all intermittent and perennial streams, wetlands, and pond areas, and that is to preserve these natural resources. Fourth, protecting cultural resources. There won't be any impact on those. And finally, Powhatan Solar 2 is committed not to use any toxic substances in the project, including those containing adacadmium or Genex chemicals. Within your staff report, of course, you've seen staff's evaluation of these six features for consideration. Staff's been working with the applicant for almost six months now and has found that every one of these six features has been complied with by the project. The Planning Commission determined that the project was not in compliance with the comprehensive plan for one single reason, which was the Planning Commission determined that the project exceeded 500 acres. And because of that decision, the Planning Commission recommended to you a denial of the special use permit based on that one factor within the substantial accord evaluation. We, we would like to explain why that decision was not correct. We don't know what acreage the Planning Commission was considering when it looked at the project and made that decision. What we do know and what is clear is what the definition of a solar energy farm is under the Powhatan County zoning ordinance. And as you can see here on your screen, solar energy farm means a system of solar panels and related equipment. It's very clear. And the acreage of that solar energy farm being submitted to you tonight is 160 acres maximum. If you look at this map, you can see the entire array area in the turquoise blue. It's actually, after doing a little bit more site planning and, and investigation, the applicant really intends to use less than 150 acres for the solar energy farm. But the point is the same. You can see that it's well below 500 acres, that turquoise area. What you see in black is setbacks. You'll see throughout the application a reference to the project size and a number 200 acres, more specifically 192 acres. That acreage includes the setbacks. And the reason the applicant includes that acreage is because the applicant's making a commitment to the county to preserve that area. And so it seemed appropriate to make reference to that. But the project size is not the same as the solar energy farm. And that is what's measured by that feature for consideration under the comprehensive plan. Another thing that the Planning Commission decided to do was to combine the acreage of this project with the project that you approved in 2019. And for reasons that we stated in our petition, we don't think that that combination of acreages is appropriate just because the two projects abut one another. But as, as we went on to argue in that petition, even if you were to combine the acreages of both projects, you would still have a total acreage far below 500 acres. As you can see on this map, once again, Powhatan 2 is shown the acreage in turquoise, and that's, that's the area that we are limiting to 160, but I said would probably be under 150. And then in the green, you can see the area of Powhatan 1. And that, that area of arrays is about 212 acres. So you can see that combined together, you get well under 400 acres. So even combined, the acreage of both projects together is well within the limits desired by a comprehensive plan. Also wanted to point out that these areas of setback, and we also show wetlands and ponds and other areas of preservation, are preserved for the benefit of the community, and the applicant is happy to preserve those. But it, it's internally inconsistent to require these preservation areas and then also count those areas in the project area. It seems internally inconsistent and unfair to the applicant to double-count them in that way. And so we would ask you to look at the plain definition and the zoning ordinance, look at the numbers that you see here, and define that this project does comply with the acreage limits set out in your comprehensive plan, and to find that it is in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan. I'm happy to take any questions, or I'll turn it back over to Haley. Thank you.
I don't see any questions coming forward at this time. Thank you, ma'am, for your presentation.
Thank you, Chair Williams.
Thank you, Lori, for, for taking that up. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have related to what I provided there at the beginning of the presentation, or any questions that Lori may be able to answer.
Question for the applicant's representative. Please, Mr. Barley.
To Powhatan County Fire and Rescue.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Hey, could you have Mr. Barley turn his microphone on, please?
I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Great, Mike. Thanks.
All right. I'm sorry. Yeah, the, you brought out some options that are available if this project.
Yes, sir. So I thought that might be better discussed with the CUP hearing, but I'm absolutely happy to bring that up now.
Well, let me, let me interrupt you just for a second, ma'am, because I'm going to ask the county attorney. At this point in the discussion, we're looking to be able to either uphold the Planning Commission's decision that this was in accord with the comprehensive plan, or overrule the Planning Commission's decision. And we're talking now about something else. Does this, is this germane to the conversation, to the decision we have to make about being in substantial accord?
Well, because we have two separate agenda items. The first one being substantial accord, the second one being the CUP. I would think the, the nature of the agenda requires that we do the substantial accord hearing first and run some risks mixing the two together, because technically the second one is dependent on the outcome of the first one and not vice versa. And so my advice would be that first, the board needs to decide whether the Planning Commission is, is or is not going to get overruled, so that you can then focus your attention on the, on the CUP issue.
Thank you, Ms. Flachny. I'm sorry, Ms. Barley.
No, thank you. That's fine. I don't have any further questions.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cox?
I don't have specific questions, but I do have a presentation that deals with the whole questions that have been raised this evening. Tom, as we get started, would you put up my presentation, please, Jason?
I suggest we do the public hearing first, because technically we're kind of into board argument and comment.
Sorry. Thank you, Ms. Flachny. I will now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward, please give your name, your address. We will allow you three minutes. If you represent a group, we will allow you five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Mike Caniglia. I live at 3835 Millmount Drive, right across the street from where they're planning this.
Welcome.
Thank you. I would like to say, please don't approve this. One of the reasons I'm against this is, no offense to anyone here tonight, but the representative back in 2019 flat-out lied to this board when they said there was no plan for a Phase 2. That, not that they were considering it, there was not one. My bigger concern is actually the traffic that this is going to cause. Last year in 2018, excuse me, in 2018, two school buses were sideswiped or sideswiped a regular-size pickup truck. Three Bridge Road is too thin. It's already crumbling at 522 at the intersection. Who's going to pay for the new road to widen it? Powhatan, it's going to end up costing us more than we're going to get from the profers, from the taxes. This is not a good decision for the county. I feel very strongly against it. And I believe that the decision was made poorly to begin with, when they took it away from Brower Road. They could have built a new road on Brower Road, which the applicant was for, from what I understood. And only inconvenienced eight families, instead of hundreds of families on Three Bridge. I strongly ask that you please deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smith, do we have anybody wishing to join us remotely tonight?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Ms. Brenda Hubbard. I see you raised your hand. Please proceed.
Welcome.
I think you're on mute. There you go.
All right. Yeah, thank you. Yes, I'm Brenda Hubbard. I actually live in Henrico, but I am representing the WH Sled Estate, which is on Route 522.
Would you please give your address, ma'am?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's 1700 Logwood Circle, Henrico, Virginia 23238.
Thank you, ma'am.
I don't know if this is the right time. I, I guess my biggest concern is not understanding what kind of a buffer is going to be addressed. We, our land does not face Three Bridge Road, but we are adjacent to this property, and I'm concerned about what kind of buffer will be there for adjoining properties. I did not hear that. I did not hear that addressed in the presentation that was made. And until I know that that is not an issue for us, I would oppose this as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smith, do we have anybody else wishing to join us?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Janet Turner, please proceed. Ms. Turner?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Janet Turner. We live at 3842 Millmount Drive, also in Westlake. I was in agreement with Mike Niglia in that I was at the board meeting where the former representative for Cypress Creek completely lied to the board and said there was no plans for a Phase 2. And I just, that just does not sit well with me. The other thing is, is I really feel like, I'm not necessarily opposed to the solar farm, but what's the rush? Why can't we see how Phase 1 goes before we even consider Phase 2? Why can't we just table this whole discussion on Phase 2 until Phase 1 is built out and we do see how it impacts the traffic and the road situation? The other thing is, as Mike said, Brower Road would be a much more appropriate entrance into this because then you would have traffic, construction traffic, coming off of 60, which is built to withstand it, and they could, you know, widen or repair Brower enough to make it viable as a construction entrance. I really just feel like I would like to see the agenda for Section 2 tabled until Section 1 is built out.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, that's all these, the online people that would like to talk to us tonight.
Then I will close the public hearing. At this point, Mr. Cox.
Thank you, sir.
Are you ready to follow through with what you needed to say?
Yes. Chase, would you put it... First of all, Tom, Mr. Latchney, you opine that this is a single unified project. Is that correct?
It's my opinion for land use purposes, this is a single project.
Okay. Okay. Because of the way the project, and it is a single project, has unfolded, there are a number of aspects of the process which can be confusing. So I'm going to try and provide some background of the path of the project to the Planning Commission, their decision, the applicant's reaction, and then my own personal observations on the applicant's position. Could I have the first slide? This is hard to see. I understand that you really don't need to see much of it other than this project started in October of 2019. And in 2019, we had a site-specific rezoning with the UP totaling 927 acres. A solar farm was added as an approved use. Because of the conditions, the project area was limited to 350.9 acres, and the solar array area wasn't even discussed. The solar array areas have always simply been one of those very important details that you have to cover, but a subordinate issue, main issue being, how big is the project? The solar array was covered, just for information, in Condition 5. This project was approved. I voted against... I won't vote for any solar industrial complex that are visible from our county roads. But it's clear there was going to be a second project. That was never a question. We raised the issue in the Planning Commission. I own the Planning Commission. The environmental study that was done listed CUP 1 and CUP 2. We discussed this, and it was confirmed that they were thinking, okay, and planning for another solar farm. So we had 927 acres rezoned so you could have solar farm. That meant 576 acres were in reserve, in storage, waiting for something to happen. They weren't using them. We knew they were going to do something else. They knew they were going to do something else. Why would they have rezoned so many acres if they weren't planning to go forward? Let's go to the second slide. This is September 2020. Same 927 acres. Same use. Same parcels. The reason for this CUP is to change the conditions. That's all it's doing. It is changing the conditions. There are one set of conditions that are involved in this. The request listed here for the project is for 200 acres. And suddenly, for the first time, we start to see the term "solar array area", which we'd never seen before. I told staff that they were about to downsize their solar project. They had 350.9, but the new conditions were going to take it to 200. They needed to show the 2019 approved acreage as well as this. It is a single unified project. Let's go to the next one. This is October 2020. This is a document that the Planning Commission had to vote on. Once again, it just shows 200 acres of the 927 as a maximum project area. You see a little notation out there on the side. No, that's me working. No, this doesn't make any sense. Then I found Condition 5. Did we go to the next... Okay. Here's Condition 5. Now, you won't torture the language. This is a poster child. "Approved conditions associated with this CUP apply to the proposed development as shown on Sheet Z1.O. of the zoning site plan dated September 15, 2020, submitted with this application. The approved conditions associated with Case 1304CUP Ordinance 0-2019-13 remain in effect for the proposed development shown on Z1 of the zoning site plan dated July 15, 2009." So this was the attempt to bring in what had already been zoned. So the project area is 200 acres plus Condition 5. Now, Condition 5 is kind of interesting. It says there's Z1-O dated 9/15/2020 and Z1 dated July 15, 2019. How's that for clarity, for Planning Commission to have to make a decision? Neither of those Z1 documents are in your packet. They weren't in their packet either. Okay? The Z1 dated, there is a Z1 dated 8/26/2020. So this is what our Planning Commission was faced with when they're trying to make a real decision about what's going on. So as the applicant said, you know, we're not real sure what they were voting on. We sure didn't make it easy on them, did we? Now, what's fascinating is we have on the Planning Commission a first-class set, at least three, of onion peelers. Could we have the next line? They said, "Ah, this is simple. The project area in '19 was 350.9 acres. The project area in 2020 is 200 acres. They are combined together in Condition 5, and that makes 550.9 acres. You're over the limit. You're out of here." It's just that simple. So could we go back? I want you to look at this chart, okay? Look at this. This, could we go forward one more now? Could be reduced to this. None of this was produced for clarity. Now, this is the reaction of Cypress Creek. Not to be denied, bless your heart. They said the problem is not the project. The problem is Palatane does not know how to read their own comprehensive plan. So let us show you. Measure some subset of the total area so that they are below the 500-acre limit. So why didn't you just measure buffer areas? Why didn't you just measure linear feet of chain-link fence? Anything so that you can continue your project. By the way, this is the second time Cypress Creek has told us we don't know how to read our own comprehensive plan. Now, I personally have been involved in all of the solar farm applications and have witnessed almost all of the public discussions. I voted for three, and I voted against two, interestingly enough, both Cypress Creek projects. In all of the discussions, the maximum project area was the focus. The engineers figure out how many solar panels you can get on an acre. Not us. We don't really care about that. We care about how much of our land are you using up for the project? The solar panel array area was one of those important detail areas that need to be defined, like buffers, like treatment of environmental areas, but it's clearly a subordinate detail. Finally, if we were to approve their petition, I would want you to remember that they now have capacity for another 100 acres of solar panels and already have, still would have, 377 acres in reserve to get that. Can you hear Phase 3? But wait. At 5:05 on Friday, there floats in a memo, could we come up, please? For Mr. Larrabee, Friday at 5 o'clock is not a mistake. It happens on purpose. And it says, "Palatane Solar 2 can commit $150,000 total in proffers, however the board sees fit." So we've gone from fog, let's not show people what's really happening, to a reading tutorial. We will tell you how to read your comprehensive plan to a purchase agreement. Palatane, if you read it my way, we will give you $150,000. Now, my own personal opinion, the Planning Commission got it right. They saw through the fog. Your project is in conflict with our comprehensive plan. And on a personal vote note, let me be clear. My vote is not for sale. Okay? It is the quality of the project in Palatane and the impact on the citizens, not your money. Now, one last thing I'd like to do, because I think it really does solidify the questions about this project. Could we have that solar map, one? And here we go. David Pessys down. Now, this map is from Solar 1, okay? And the only reason I give it to you is because, one, it's bright, it's crisp, it's simple, and you can see what they're asking, okay? This is a solar array versus a total project. So they're telling you, the applicant, that we should just snip out the blue stuff, stack it up, and that's all that counts. We've been saying, wow, we got it all wrong. We think we need to look at the project holistically. One other feature of this, Mr. Pompey, I need you, please, sir. We have, by my count, I think, the Planning Commission had 24 carefully crafted conditions to make sure this project worked right.
For Palatane Solar 1 or...?
The Planning Commission just turned down, and I think it has 24 conditions.
That's correct.
Okay. Now, do the conditions apply only to the solar array, or do they apply to the entire project?
The conditions would apply to the entire project.
Okay, it's for the project, okay. Mr. Chairman, thank you, Andrew. Mr. Chairman, that's pure and simple. I can't support this. This petition have no interest in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mrs. Carmack.
Mr. Latchney, help me understand how this differs from Scott Solar, where it was two conditional use permits.
Well, I don't think two conditional use permits really have anything to do with anything, to be honest with you. A conditional use permit is like a rezoning, and...
Correct, but that was two projects.
It was two, well, it was two phases. We do it in a residential, especially residential commercial development all the time, where it's, where people develop in phases, and so they'll rezone Phase 1, build it, then rezone Phase 2. Well, we treat that as a global project because we, Maple Grove subdivision, to give an example, on Three Bridge Road.
They didn't, I don't, I don't recall I wasn't on when Maple Grove, but I take Walnut Creek. They are coming in for Phase 3. They don't come back into the Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission.
But for Maple Grove, will be back. They're trying to rezone another section now.
Correct, because he downzoned it.
Right, but...
Because he downzoned it. He came in for an act of downzoning.
People routinely will zone sections. That's not abnormal. It's done, that's a normal way of doing things, is to rezone sections of a development one at a time for no other reason to save taxes, or you're not ready to build it, et cetera. Again, you can't, I mean, we had a developer to take this to the extreme, who was trying to build his road less than 10,000 square feet at a time so it could avoid DEQ. We said, no, this is a global development, and building your road 10,000 square feet at a time doesn't change that this is a global development. And this, their initial environmental study was for one unified parcel. Solar 1, Solar 2, I mean, the lady just talked about their interconnection issues, and the reason that they did it in two phases was because of transformer issues at the substation. And to me, that's all a tacit admission. It's a single project. And it was designed as a single project that had to be structured this way because of transformer issues at a substation.
Okay.
Mrs. Carmack?
Let's go through the chair, please.
I'm sorry.
Wait, but I have one quick question.
Mrs. Carmack, please.
With, Bill, you mentioned we rezoned this. We never rezoned this. It was always 810.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cox.
Two things. One, let's talk about Scott first. Okay, Scott was about 900 acres, and the entire tract was not rezoned to a site-specific use. Part of it was. Then they came back with Scott 2 and rezoned the rest of it so that you could have a solar farm use. It was done in two different bites, and it was sold to two different people, okay? And it was done at two different times and built at two different times, okay? So it was zoned one time for one piece and zoned the other time for another piece. That's what the fascinating thing about this one is. All 927 acres can have solar farm on it. The only thing preventing that are the conditions, okay?
Correct, yeah.
So that's what's different with this one. All of it was zoned. Scott was zoned in two different zoning bites.
Please, Ms. Carmack.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to, I think the core of what this is is basically that last sentence in the comprehensive plan. To help these projects blend into the rural landscape, each solar farm should be, should be, should be less than 500 acres an area. Let's talk about area for a second. If you look at the first page of our packet, page 88, you have total parcel area, 927 acres. Project area, 200-plus acres, or 550 if we count them both. acres, project area, 200 plus acres, or 550 if we count them both together, or the maximum solar array area, either 160 acres, or again, if we count them together, 385 acres. So the reason I, Mr. Cox, I was 100% with you about two weeks ago until I got my packet and then I did a total about face. The reason being is I had several planning commissioners call me prior to their meeting and say, what was your intent when you were on the planning commission? What was it? Was it, you know, the total, total project area? And I said, oh yeah, it was the total project area. And, um, and I didn't think much more about it until, you know, kind of till I got our packet. And I read this, I read the attorney, we weren't clear. We're not clear. I mean, the reality is, that is not clear. Furthermore, if I, I have it in my brain, but I don't have it on paper, and if the planning commission doesn't know what we mean, how the heck is the applicant supposed to know what we mean? Lastly, okay, let's say worst case, this project area is 550 acres, let's say worst case scenario. The comprehensive plan is a guide, and in here you have should be. If we want to change it, it needs shall be, not should be. We need to be specific. And with your comprehensive plan, as you guys know, this is a guide, it's not a zoning ordinance. I mean, you can say, it's, yeah, pretty much in accord with it, that 550 acres versus 500 acres. I mean, I don't think our clarity is there to completely negate their application. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Carmack.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cox.
Clarity, absolute clarity is not required. Mrs. Carmack is absolutely correct, she can find another way to read it, and she's comfortable with that, she will, I got no problem with that at all. Just, we have, in our deliberations over the past solar farm projects, talked about total area and not about a right, and I continue to do that, and Mrs. Carmack apparently has progressed in other ways in looking at it, and we'll call it a broader sense, okay, than I am. I'm very comfortable where I am. But we, we have a firm who continues to want to lecture us on what our comprehensive plan is about. We have a firm that on one hand tells us, wow, we're only going to have one project, and turns around and says we're going to have another. Quite frankly, I see a third one, okay? This is not about just trying to find clarity, it's about trying to figure out what's best for Powhatan County. We started off, when we started talking about the aspects of solar farms and what we wanted to do and what we didn't want to do, we used Scott One and Two as a good example. Those were both about 350 acres roughly in terms of total project areas, and you couldn't see them from the road. So we kind of liked that size, and we first started talking about, we were talking about 350 to 500 acres, somehow it got to morph to 500, that's fine. We didn't bring clarity into we can't see it from the road. And we didn't address the other piece, which was, we were surprised at Scott. We didn't know there was going to be a second one, we knew there were going to be a second one here. And so we talked about limiting the proximity of solar farms, no more than a mile, at least a mile apart, or something like that, okay? But a, but a real difference between them. And so the comprehensive plan was discussion, like most comprehensive plans, is built not in absolutes, though I think we probably should put some development standards in for some absolutes. And so the comprehensive plan tries to keep from nailing everything down absolutely, which allows my, me, Bill Cox, to read it one way, and Mrs. Carmack to read it another way, and not beat each other's throats, that's just fine. But the intent's been simple, as far as I'm concerned. This is too big, and you didn't tell us the truth to start off with. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Other board member comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Please, Mr. Barley.
This is quite interesting, these guys all have a lot of experience and was on boards, and I wasn't. So this is kind of new to me. I think that when I read the project size, it says to help these projects blend into the rural landscape. That would mean blend in, let's have our buffer, kind of like Mr. Cox says, you know, we don't want to drive by and see panels, and that's why we have a buffer. If we're going to see the panels, maybe we need to make the buffer larger. That would make me think of the term housekeeping in our own house. Each solar energy farm, and I don't hear us discussing what a solar energy farm is, I think the applicant put the definition up there and we all have it in our packet, but should be less than 500 acres in area. So I have a question for Mr. Latchney. Based upon that, does it have to be less than 500 acres?
No, that's, that's why...
Thank you, I appreciate the answer.
Mr. Latchney, go ahead with your explanation, I think it'd be beneficial for all of us to hear it.
No, I, that's why the finding is a substantial accord with the comprehensive plan, because it has to be, and it's up to you guys to determine, well, actually, the planning commission, and you decide they were wrong, doesn't say absolute accord, it says substantial accord.
Thank you, Mr. Latchney.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Mr. Barley?
Thank you. I'm in the thank you mode this evening. So let me, if I, if I get that part of what you're saying, Mr. Latchney, substantial, I think that has to do with what's referred to as review 2232 in the packet, with the state code being 15.2-2232.
Correct.
Am I right?
That's the code section.
The comprehensive plan is a guide. Period. It's a guide. Now, however, in this statute, it goes on and it says, there's an exception for solar Now, I'm going to paraphrase it, Mr. Latchney can correct me, but it says that there's, that the solar farms have to be in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan of the locality. So if I heard right, our comprehensive plan has six features. Under 500 acres, access major thoroughfare plan, or access major thoroughfare, protected view shed, protect natural resources, protecting cultural resources, prohibit toxic materials. Those were the six things that were listed in our comprehensive plan. So the applicant has five out of the six, and that's not substantial. I guess you have to have six out of the six. Seems to me five out of six would be substantial. The last word in this statement says area. And when I looked at area in our packet, total partial area, 927.38 acres, project area, 200 plus or minus acres, maximum solar array area, 160 acres. When I look at what our comprehensive plan says, it just says in area. So I need somebody to tell me which area it's referring to before I can make a vote. Total parcel area, 927.38 acres, project area, 200 plus or minus acres, maximum solar area, array, 160 acres. I don't know which area it is. I would like to make a good decision on behalf of the citizens of this county. I, I'm, maybe I just don't get that area word. But I know this, when I talked to the Commissioner of Revenue today, Mr. Timberlake, I wanted to know how much revenue we would be getting in this, on this project. And the interesting thing, when I discovered how much revenue Powhatan County would be receiving just in real estate taxes, close to a million dollars, 900,000. The thing that got me the most from Mr. Timberlake's conversation is I asked him, how do we figure real estate taxes? Is it the total parcel, parcel area? Is it the project area, 200 acres? Is it the maximum solar array area, 160 acres? It was an interesting answer, because unless I'm wrong, and Mr. Timberlake's sitting in the office or in the auditorium, Mr. Timberlake told me today on the phone that the real estate taxes will be based upon the maximum solar array area. So that sounds like maybe the area we should be using is the maximum solar array area for this project. And if we add that number, which is originally 175 acres when the applicant came in, then it went down, and our packet that I'm looking at says 160, and Ms. Larrabee tonight said it's probably going to end up being below 150. So let's just say it's the 160 plus the other solar one project that's out there. We're like 385 acres, we're not at 500. And I'm going to tell you, when I, when I read, I went to Powhatan High School, and it says shall, or it says should, not shall, then it doesn't have to be 500 acres. Do we want it to be 500 acres? Would we like for it to be 500? Would we like for it to be under? You know, I guess we would, but it doesn't say that. So if we're going to abide by our own code, our own policy, our own comprehensive plan, then it looks like to me they're in, what shall I say, compliance of that. When you have, if I heard Mr. Latchney write, a CUP, a conditional use permit, say that that's the same as a rezoning, then I ask myself, what is a conditional use permit? A condition, I guess. For a use, I guess. So it seems like to me, if we're outside of where we want to be, that's the reason you apply for conditional use permit. Just my thinking, I might be a little bit outside the box of everybody else. Mr. Cox made the comment that this firm is lecturing us about what our comp plan says. I don't proclaim to be the most intelligent person in the world, but should means it should be less than 500, doesn't mean it has to be less than 500. The other thing of the elephant in the room is, I believe it was October the 28th, 2019, when Powhatan Solar One was approved, and I've heard multiple times that that night at the Board of Supervisors, and I was here that night, I just didn't quite catch that word until I went back and looked at it in the archives and listened to what was said. But if everybody knew that night that it was going to be a phase two, why did we approve phase one? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Barley. Other board comments?
Mr. Chairman, it's Larry from District Two.
Norvick, please.
That last comment from Mr. Barley, if we knew there was going to be a phase two, why did we approve phase one? I'll start by saying I voted no on phase one. I won't go into that. So not everybody on that board was ready for phase one, and I think I had good reasons. But the phase two part, I looked at the archive as well, and there was an interesting exchange between Carson Tucker, who represented District Five on the last board, and I was sitting across the dais from him, and I looked at that archive too, and it struck me that maybe what Mr. Barley just said is not quite the case. I was not convinced there was going to be a phase two, and I know Carson Tucker was not convinced there was going to be a phase two, but we had, I guess I'll call it sneaking suspicions, because the thing was labeled solar one. So basically, what happened was this. Carson Tucker asked, at that time Parker Sloan, the representative for Cypress Creek Renewables, he asked him, are you planning a second phase? And the answer was that we are not proposing a second phase at this time. And Carson came back, and I paraphrase here, where he said, so you're not telling me that you're going to, but you're not telling me you're not going to. And it was a little bit, the answer was a little bit fishy, in my opinion, and I remember that night. And the question was, why would you call it, from Mr. Tucker, why would you call it solar one if solar two and/or solar three wasn't already planned, or at least in the works? So it was not a sure thing, in the minds of at least a couple supervisors, that this project was going to be this big. And here's the key. What Carson said was, you're making us do piecemeal development, which is exactly what this board does not want. And that struck a chord with me. And then he closed with this, he said, I hope to God you're not playing games with us. And I came away from that first meeting, to be honest, feeling like I was being played. And after watching Mr. Cox's presentation and a little bit of a change of definition of project, and now we're, we're wordsmithing, you know, what is a project, what is a solar farm, which area, this is not a good place to be, this is not a good way to do business. And I think, I'm going to pull this out, almost anybody driving by a solar farm would point to it and say to the whole thing, oh, look, there's a solar farm over there. They wouldn't say, look at those rows and rows of projects, look at those rows and rows of, of solar farms. You look at the whole thing, holistically, and call it a solar farm. And I think that was the impression a year ago, October 28th. So basically, this should have been presented to us all at one time so that everybody could have understood how much land we're going to gobble up. And I'm not satisfied that I was given the entire truth a year ago, and I'm a little disturbed that we're fine pointing this right now tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Norvick.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Carmack.
Just one final statement that...
Just one final statement that I would like you guys to consider. Um, one thing we say repeatedly is we want business in Palatán County. We say that all the time. We want business in Palatán County. And here we have a situation that if we deny this, we don't even hear them. We don't even hear what's, what, you know, they may potentially provide us. Um, I'll give you an example. Last week, we had a Parks and Rec Master Plan Meeting where we discussed all these needs, wants, desires for Parks and Rec. You're correct, Bill. We got an email on Friday, $150,000 that they would proffer to Parks and Rec or Fire and Rescue or whatever our heart desires. We got the real estate assessment of what it would increase. That was $892,000. So you're looking at literally over a million dollars that will be paid to this county potentially. And we won't even take a seat at the table and listen to what they have to say. You know, we, we talk out of both sides of our mouth. I mean, one minute we, we want to lower taxes, we want lower taxes. Well, if you want lower taxes, you need to have businesses of some sort. You just do. It doesn't work that way where, you know, every, you know, we want to do all these programs. We want to do Parks and Rec, yet at the same time, we won't even talk to them. Like I said, let's just at least have a seat at the table with them.
Mr. Chairman, it's Larry.
Excuse me, thank you, Mrs. Carmack, Mr. Norvick.
I don't think how much money we're going to make or not make has anything to do with this appeal. I, I think Chairman Williams made that clear toward the beginning of this conversation. I'm not going to base my opinion on this appeal of whether the Planning Commission got it right or wrong, on how much money we're going to get out of it if we just pass this and get on to the discussion. That is definitely not what I'm looking to do.
Thank you, Mr. Norvick, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. The question of timing, as I mentioned earlier, five o'clock, 5:05 to be exact, on a Friday afternoon was calculated, okay? What you hope is you're going to provide some dissent. It's not a question of sit down with them. We've been talking with them for four years. I'm sorry, this is not a new discussion. They have decided to change the discussion at the last moment for reasons that suit them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Cox.
Could I make a motion?
May I have an opportunity to respond in any way? If not, I'm happy to oblige the motion.
I will grant you the opportunity to respond. We typically let you do the presentation and then we discuss among ourselves.
Sure, we can leave it at that, feel free.
But if, I'm, I know, if you would like to have a few final comments, please.
Great, thank you for that opportunity. So I do just have a couple of points that I wanted to make, just a couple clarifying notes. No part of this property was ever rezoned. The property has been agriculturally zoned and will continue to be in areas that there potentially may not be a solar farm. There could be continued timber uses and agriculture uses that go on, you know, just right next to a solar farm. So that's one point I wanted to make. In terms of the email that I sent on Friday afternoon, you know, we went through much deliberation with the Planning Commission in regards to adding this pollinator certification requirement. There is a very, very significant cost associated with that program. And so what I had hoped to do, you know, we are of course happy to continue moving forward with our pollinator certification and $40,000 in proffers. But I thought, just kind of in the essence of where, you know, budgets are and COVID and everything else, maybe there would be an opportunity and the community would see more benefit in cash proffers than they would in the certification program for pollinators. So I only provided those two as alternative community benefit packages and certainly am not trying to buy votes. So I do just hope that comes across. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please, Mr. Byerly.
Thank you. And, and hearing Ms. Larrabee bring that up, and, and I'm glad that you did. And I know Mr. Cox referenced that the buying, buying votes with the five o'clock email, which I sort of take offense to that. The thing that I would say, in addition to what else you've got here, alluding to what Ms. Carmack said, in, in disagreeing with what Mr. Norvick said, the, uh, there's, there is a financial aspect to this that I think you have to consider. The property is zoned A10, and I think with the solar farm there, I guess the remaining acreage, as it's zoned A10, the landowner could take it and cut it into 10 acre lots and put 100 houses there, however many acres are left, you know, 50 or whatever houses. And at that point, because clearly the landowner wants to do something with the land to make it maybe prosper in some way. I don't know. I don't try to read the minds. I just try to look at what we're dealing with. But I do think that, you know, with a solar farm, we don't have the expenses that we do with a housing project that could go there. And I don't think he has to come in, uh, uh, the developer has to come in or landowner has to come in and ask for any reason, he could just start building houses. Which creates a little bit of an expense for us. And then I'm going to go to exactly where Ms. Carmack did with, with this, because I strongly believe in it, very strongly. The tax rate, and I've said this before, during, actually June 29th at the meeting, we listened to the other county who we often refer to and compare ourselves to for guidance and direction of how we're going to operate, which would be Goochland County. And we had the pleasure of meeting with Mr. Peterson from over there that said, you have to have a competitive tax rate. If you want to do business, you have to have a competitive tax rate. So if there's a million dollars on the table here and we're going to pass it by and move on, that's about a three cents on your tax rate with no expenses coming in. That's, that's three pennies. And you just went through a tax increase with that June 29th meeting. From a financial standpoint, with a solar farm, it would seem to me that you do create more revenue. And I don't know what the expense of this project is, but I did find out right before the meeting that if it's an eight million dollar investment, and it may be 12 or six, I have no idea. But if it's an eight million dollar investment, in addition to the million dollars or 900,000, excuse me, that, yeah, in real estate taxes, including rollback taxes, you're going to pick up about $58,000 minimum a year in M and T taxes. It just seems like to me, everybody's heard Mike Byerly say, I'm all for rule. I've, I've been in this county since 1962, and I am very much for rule. I think that if you want a good, honest conversation, if we're going to stay rural, we're going to have higher taxes. If you want lower taxes, you will have to bring some businesses in. And the art of all of that is to be able to find a way to manage it to where you bring in businesses or, or opportunities that are not intrusive to our lifestyle. I agree, nobody wants to ride by and look at a, at a, at a solar farm. I'm not disagreeing with them. That's why we have a buffer. It's a 40-year project. In the next 40 years, we leave it alone and it stays in land use. In the next 40 years, you get $612 in taxes a year on 160 acres in land use. $612 a year. You put a solar farm there, you're going to collect $20,400 a year. Over the course of the 40 years, you're right at $900,000. If you leave it like it is for the next 40 years, Palatán County, the taxpayers, the citizens, we're going to get $24,000 over the next 40 years. We don't have to agree and like everything, but we need to do something to help out, to keep our taxes lower so we can be more competitive. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Byerly. Mr. Cox.
When we looked at how the county was going to grow and the need for businesses, we said we were going to grow it in three concise areas so that the rest of the county would continue to look, feel, and be rural. Putting a utility scale, solar industrial complex, up and down is not a farm, up and down our roads really works against what everybody told me when I was campaigning with rural really is important. Let's talk about buffers a second. I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Byerly. We repeatedly have told this firm, I have, that they didn't have to allow the trees to be cut by forest standards, which means there is no forested buffer, that it was entirely under their control to provide a natural, no see-through buffer. We talked about that with the Cartisville, and talked about that with this. This firm just said, yeah, okay. Totally ignored that. Their interest in us having a buffer and not seeing it, as far as I've been able to determine, is zero. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Norvick.
Hey, um, I, I'm a little disturbed. I'm going to have to try to say this delicately because I consider you all my friends. And, you know, I, I've talked with every one of you on the phone or in person or whatever, just in the last week or two, every single one of you. So I'm, I'm glad we have those kinds of. I think there's a problem right now with the conversation in that it's convoluted the two things that we have on our agenda back to back. Right now, we're talking about whether or not to overturn the decision of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission did not make their decision based on an email that we got Friday with, you know, proffers and it, they didn't base it on tax rates, they didn't base it on $895,000 or what we can do for Parks and Rec. That is not this discussion. And I know Chairman Williams, you brought that up toward the beginning. This discussion is about the scope of the project itself, and if I may say, the character of the project. That was the main thrust behind the Planning Commission saying, no, it does not meet our comprehensive plan. It, it did not revolve around how much money we're going to make off this thing. And I think we should narrow it back to, do we think the Planning Commission was well within its rights to deny this CUP, recommend denial of it? Or were they not? I mean, that's basically what we're here to discuss right now. So I'd like to bring it back to that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norvick, and thank you for refocusing the conversation, which I tried to do when we first started going down that avenue back at the beginning of the discussion with Mr. Latchney. Uh, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we affirm the Planning Commission's decision that this project is not in substantial accord with our comprehensive plan.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? I have a first from Mr. Cox, I have a second with Mr. Norvick. If not, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Let's clarify what the vote means.
Vote is an affirmative, it's an affirmation of the decision of the Planning Commission.
So an I vote?
An I vote is to uphold the decision of the Planning Commission that it is not in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Chairman, part of the discussion, I'm looking at the motion in our packet on page 74.
Yes.
And it does say, the motion says, after review, the Board of Supervisors moves to affirm slash overrule the decision made. So I don't know if we need to clarify that language in written form or, you know, I just heard you say that the motion is moving to affirm the Planning Commission decision. But that language is a little confusing in the packet, in my opinion.
Let's do this then. Mr. Cox, will you make that motion? That Mr., that Mr. Norvick just read.
I'm not sure where he read it.
Page 74 of.
Under motion.
Under motion.
Under motion.
Second.
Second.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yep, that's it. See how it's got the affirm slash overrule?
The Board of Supervisors, I, I make a motion that the Board of Supervisors move to affirm the decision made by the Planning Commission that proposed solar energy farm is not in accord with the recommendations made in the 2019 Long Range Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you. Do I have a second, Mr. Norvick?
Yes, second.
Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Smither, will you call the roll?
Mr. Norvick.
Aye.
Byerly?
No.
Ms. Carmack?
No.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
That moves us, excuse me, to our next public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, one, one point of clarification for the audience is having affirmed the Planning Commission, the original project that was approved last October still remains with access from Three Bridge Road. That's still approved. We did not get rid of that. Is that correct, Mr. Latchney?
That's correct.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Please, Mr. Byerly.
The original entrance that was decided last year, October 28th, is the same entrance?
It's Three Bridge Road, yes.
Right.
Yes.
It's not moving.
No, that, that would be directly across from Westlake, correct? Thank you.
That moves us, board members, to ordinance 0202017, County of Palatán, rezoning amendment of Cortez Square zoning district. Pompe, you're going to lead this discussion?
Yes, sir. So the next public hearing is ordinance O-2020-17, which is case number 20-05AZ. This is an ordinance amendment to the zoning ordinance that was initiated by the County of Palatán. It would change the Courthouse Square Center CHSC Zoning District from a transition, transition-based district to a village growth area district. It'll add uses to that particular zoning district to the list of permitted and conditional uses. So the CHSC zoning district applies in the core Courthouse Village, the few blocks that are on Route 13 surrounding the Courthouse Village. Again, this ordinance amendment would change that particular zoning district from being a transition-based district to a village growth area district. Transition-based districts are those ordinance, are those zoning districts that the county has indicated would like to move away from in favor of the village growth area zoning districts that are more in line with recommendations made in the comprehensive plan. So that will be the first change. And again, several uses will be added to the list of permitted and conditional uses. This particular ordinance amendment was initiated by the Board of Supervisors on September 28th. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on November 4th and recommended approval with a vote of five to zero.
Any questions for Mr. Pompe before I open the public hearing? I will now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward, please give your name, your address. We'll allow you three minutes. If you're representing a group, we will allow you five. Mr. Smither, do we have anybody wishing to join us from afar?
Mr. Chairman, we do not.
Seeing no one coming down the aisle, I will close the public hearing. Discussion board members?
I have, I have a question for Mr. Pompe.
Yes, sir.
With this twenty dash oh five AZ, we are reinstituting. The Courthouse Square District and adding these uses?
That's correct.
Okay. I have on page one fifty-one or is a list of new uses. I have some concerns about hotel or motel. They are synonymous in definitions in our zoning, okay? So we can have a days in here?
I don't, well, one thing to note that that hotel will be added as a conditional use, so the Board of Supervisors would have to approve that. So I think. As any CUP has approved, if someone submits an application for a hotel or motel in the courthouse village, we'd be looking at the character of the proposed development proposed use to make sure aligned. So theoretically, a days in could be approved by the board as part of a conditional use permit. But do I think that's likely based on the character of the area? No.
I, I, thank you. I started with Mr. Pompey and. This discussion about how we could get the village beginning to move. And the first thing was to actually have a zoning district that was live rather than all of our districts being dead. And that that would be a step. For creating a village overview district, overlay district, overlay district, excuse me, overlay district. I would prefer. That we not put hotel or motel in at this stage, but consider it as part of the overlay district later on. If the rest of the board is wants to keep it in there, then I will vote for it. But I would, that's something I would like to see later on.
Board member comments?
It's conditional, so that definitely gives us more leverage than.
Yeah, no, it does give us some leverage.
That doesn't give me as too much concern.
So as you're saying, Mrs. Carmack, as a conditional use, you feel like we have more control? Okay, I, I, I kind of agree with you. Mr. Cox, did you?
No, I'm, no, I'm just waiting on y'all. As I said, I have some concerns about that. If that's something that y'all feel comfortable with, I will support it.
Mrs. Mrs. Carmack, I'll pine. I agree with her. Mr. Barley?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Ms. Norvik?
I just have a question real quick, Mr. Chairman, for Mr. Cox, and that is, you know, and nobody's digging their heels in here, so we're good. But what is your definition of later? If if you wanted to scratch it tonight, what is your definition of put it in later or consider it later?
That's, I think that's directed to you, Mr. Cox.
Yeah, I'm not sure what you're, I'm not sure where where we are, Mr. Norvik, help me.
Well, I'm at home, so.
Later, but not have it now.
Well, we, what I had envisioned is this is a step toward, because we were looking at our growth districts. That we would have a overlay district for the village. First of all, we don't have a. A geographic area that's the village. Now, this zoning does because it has six square blocks and only six square blocks. And so it was my thought and hope. That we would been moving past this in the future, and there we we might look at even more uses. I had some concerns about motels and hotels. Mrs. Carmack and Mr. Williams are comfortable that we have enough control. And if they are, I'll be happy to support that.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
One of the reasons I ask is it took.
Norvik.
It, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, it took several years and and more than one board to come up with our current comprehensive plan. And we're already reworking that. I guess that's always gonna be a work in progress. But we're not gonna leave this in here and then the next board, three years from now, comes along and says. Yeah, we're gonna put up a Holiday Inn Express right here in the village. That won't happen, will it? We're talking about doing this sooner than that.
No, I think what Mrs. Carmack is saying and what Mr. Cox is saying is. That if we put this in as a conditional use, that it has another layer of control and scrutiny before it takes place. As opposed to just being a permitted use where it can automatically go in. I think that's what they're saying.
I got you. I'm I'm fine with it. I mean, the way it is right now, I'll vote for it.
Okay, so I think we have consensus.
So I would, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Would you please make a motion?
That we approve ordinance dash zero dash twenty twenty dash seventeen.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Smith, will you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Ms. Norvik?
Aye.
Mr. Barley?
Abstain.
Ms. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
That moves us to our next item on the agenda, and that is ordinance O dash twenty twenty eighteen. County of Powhatan conditional rezoning of two parcels to the Courthouse Square Center. Mr. Pompey, please.
So thank you, Mr. Williams. This rezoning request is related to the previous ordinance amendment. Ordinance O dash twenty twenty dash eighteen, which is case number twenty dash oh three dash REZ. Is a request by the county of Powhatan. It's a county-initiated rezoning to rezone two parcels in the core courthouse village. Tax map parcels twenty-six B two dash three dash eight B and twenty-six B two three dash ten. From general commercial C to courthouse square center CHSC. Those properties total point six one acres combined, and they're located on the west side of Route thirteen. At Marion Hartland Lane on either side of that particular intersection. For those of us that know the village, it's the Four Seasons Restaurant and the, I guess, the old bank, old store building immediately adjacent to it. Those two properties are currently zoned general commercial C, which is a transition-based district. They are completely surrounded by the courthouse square center district, and both of those particular properties have non-conforming uses on them. With that ordinance amendment you just passed, if this rezoning request is also approved. Those properties will be rezoned to CHSC, and the existing uses will be considered conforming. Again, this particular rezoning request was initiated on September twenty-eighth. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on it on November fourth and recommended approval with a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Pompey. I will now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward, please give your name, your address. We will allow you three minutes. If you're representing a group, we will allow you five minutes. Mr. Smith, do we have anybody wishing to join us?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Then I will close the public hearing. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make motion that we approve ordinance zero dash twenty twenty dash eighteen.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Mr. Norvik is a second. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Smith, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Norvik?
Aye.
Mr. Barley?
Abstain.
Ms. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
That brings us to our second public comment period. Anybody wishing to come down and speak to the board, address the board? Please give your name, your address. We'll allow you three minutes. If you represent a group, we'll allow you five. Welcome.
Kitty Osborne, one oh seven one Dorset Road, Powhatan, Virginia. I represent myself right now, anyway. I hear you all talk a lot about what's best for Powhatan County. I am Powhatan County. You know, I'd like to hear the words what's best for the landowner. But anyway, Mr. Cox, I'm gonna use your term. I want to start peeling an onion tonight regarding the, something that's gonna come up in December for vote in regards to land gifting. And when you peel down about some of the decisions that have been made already about land gifting, I just wanted to share with you. Some of the hardships that I endured when I was gifted land. And I don't think anybody peeled an onion when they made that five-year rule that you can't sell gifted land for five years. Most of us aren't gifted land with the thought that we're gonna sell it. We're building our retirement home on it. But anyway, with that stipulation that the county's put on gifted land that you can't sell it. It makes you not competitive for a good, for a competitive mortgage. You have to deal, excuse me, with maybe a higher mortgage rate. You gotta have some serious cash flow. If I had been a younger person and not at the end of my career and didn't have hard assets, I had to bankroll my own construction loan. I mean, I had to liquidate over two or three years so that I could mitigate my long-term capital gains losses. I had to litigate close to a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to even build on gifted land. Couldn't use the gifted land as a collateral on the loan because I couldn't sell it for five years. That five-year thing also creates some hardships. Because even though I had to pay back taxes on the land because it had been in farm use or forestry. I had to pay the same taxes then on that land that my neighbors that had no sale restrictions on it, same tax rate. Even though I couldn't sell it. And it does bring up a hardship when, and I thank God this didn't happen to me. But if there was a death or a divorce or a financial situation, you have to come to you all to ask permission to sell the land. So that's, that's kind of a hardship. But anyway, the the onion that I want to start peeling tonight a little bit is not necessarily reversing that five-year decision because that's not up for discussion. I understand that we're gonna be discussing in December some of the changes that want to be made. And the the big change is you can't gift to a spouse. I don't think that that should be changed. A lot of us inherited our land only in our name, often here in a rural area. You're you're inherited in one name, but it's not necessarily a good business plan for whatever reason. To especially if your spouse has land or if your spouse has a corporation or an LLC. And depending upon what type of work they do or you do, it may not be in your best interest. Anyway, I want to keep the spouse in, and I think that you should be able to gift land to anybody that you want to gift land to. I can give land to a church, and I have a nephew living on my property, helping me keep it in farm use. And if I wanted to gift him land, I should be able to do so. Thank you. So we'll start peeling that onion tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. David Anderson, twenty-one twenty State Middle State Drive. Just wanna make a quick comment somewhat related to the solar case that took place tonight. I had a keen interest in the case, but that's not at all related to my comment. I just want to recommend the board and the chairman for conducting what I thought was a very insightful hearing. I thought it was very civil. I thought it was very transparent. I think the conversations that were had among the members were very frank. And I just think it's it's good for the citizens to see that. And help us be better informed about some of the tough decisions we have to make as a county moving forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Smith, is it anybody that wishes to join us from afar? Okay, I will close the second public comment period. County attorney comments?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
County administrator comments? Board member comments?
Mr. Chairman, I've got just one.
Please, Mr. Norvik.
The citizens that spoke about the Founders Bridge area and the the traffic safety concerns and basically speeding and whatnot. Just a few ideas just came into my head, you know, I've been talking to Sheriff Nunley about these things, too. They they now have pretty low-cost signage that you can actually attach to existing signage. And VDOT will approve it. And it's the radar sort of flashing your speed at you in, you know, orange LED readout letters and and that kind of thing. And they're solar-powered and don't require any maintenance, and they literally just snap onto the existing pole that your speed limit sign is on. So things like that might help. Most neighborhood people don't like speed bumps in the long term. They find it more annoying than the problem it was supposed to solve. But there is something that works like a speed bump, and that is three D sidewalks. And somebody mentioned there's about five places where they, where people cross. Three D sidewalks are flush with the pavement, but they they paint them to look like they're a little speed bump. And so you got these stripes that look like they have texture to them. So it, they may want to look into some of those alternatives to having a sheriff deputy with a radar sitting in an intersection. Because as they said, as soon as that sheriff's car goes away, a day or two later, the speeding is back. The flashing signs work pretty well, and the three D sidewalks, those will get the people who don't live there. The ones that know that it's a phony figure that out pretty quick. But, you know, you'll you'll slow down the pizza delivery guy at least. So just a couple ideas that came into my head during that public comment period. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Norvik. So folks will know I've been in contact with the sheriff. I've been in contact with Rebecca Worley, who is our resident engineer at VDOT. And I've also been in discussions with the residents down at Founders Bridge about this issue. We're gonna move forward in crafting a solution to the problem. Working with VDOT, working with Sheriff Nunley, and I'm sure we're gonna get the problem addressed. But thank you for your comments, Mr. Norvik. Any other comments from supervisors? Mr. Cox, you look like you have.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. We started off this evening talking about our, the safety world, fire life safety. And pretty amazing story. Today, on thirteen, moving west just before you get to six oh nine. A tractor trailer of logs lost it. The driver unfortunately was badly injured and had to be medevaced out. But that shut down thirteen. Six oh nine was on. The sheriff's department did a magnificent job. Okay, this is, when I say shut down thirteen, I'm talking about from sixty to Macon. It couldn't get through. They and VDOT did an outstanding job of managing the traffic and also managing the traffic coming east on thirteen. So our sheriff's department, our first responders just continue to do a marvelous job in Powhatan County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Any other comments, Mr.?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barley.
To echo. Ms. Osborne. Yeah, I'm pretty glad to be from Powhatan myself. And when I seen the. First responders and everyone come down the aisle to talk this evening about the, Mr. West, I think was his last name, for his cardiac arrest. That makes you be proud of living in this county. People that just step up and help in a time of need, a complete stranger. Because those citizens that came down, they don't, they don't know who this person is. I think that in Powhatan, we need to recognize that. We have something very special. I mean, as we get referred to appear elected leaders, we have conversations. And as as Mr. Anderson come down and said tonight, it was nice to have a civil conversation. That created a lot of information for our citizens. That I think many of them don't know and maybe don't understand all of the 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 things that that go on in making a decision. Whether we agree or not is not the point. It's, we got some information out to citizens. And I I thank the board for that and the chairman and county attorney and county administrator for this evening's meeting. I think it was a good meeting. And then the last thing. Mr. Ordia, who spoke about the mandatory COVID vaccine coming from the rich, from Richmond. And he, he's correct. I tried to put a survey on Facebook, and every time I used the word government, vaccine and mandated, I couldn't do it. It wouldn't work. But I think it's something we all need to pay close attention to and. Watch and and see, you know, as our, as our rights, our freedoms begin to erode away, we need to pay attention to that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Barley, and I concur with your comments. Yeah, you can hardly believe it's Thanksgiving coming up. A lot has happened since, you know, March with COVID. Time's gone by fast and yet it's gone by slow. But we're here, and that's a grateful thing. And we're looking at a wonderful time of the year. We're going into Thanksgiving, to the holidays, to Christmas. We're very blessed because we've gotten this far, and I continue to believe that we're gonna keep going. And it's gonna get better. But anyway, with that, everybody have a good Thanksgiving, be safe, and we will see you in December. And I'm gonna adjourn this meeting at eight forty PM.
Good night.